And that's what this public hearing is about. Let me first of all say that establishing an ERA is just basically a prerequisite to be able to consider any requests for either real or personal property tax abatement that comes forward. Sometimes in what we've done in the past, where we have certain areas that are identified by a separate statutory and formulary resolution. So as an example, the Peru industrial park, the West End, all those different areas are already determined. What we had a discussion about back some time ago was, well, could we consider the entire city as one because it has no impact whatsoever on property classification, taxation, assessed value. It's basically an economic development tool where you would like to promote growth and encourage growth to occur. So that's basically what you're going through this ERA. So the background of this career, I'd recommend that, you know, we maybe ask if there are any questions from the public or questions from the council and, you know, address those that might be out there.
Does anybody on the council have any questions for Jim on this? I know you've all been in a meeting evidently about this prior to this meeting.
No.
It was brought up in the council meeting.
They were about the other thing.
Which is going to be brought up under new business to do the ordinance. Does the audience have any questions for Jim?
I have a question. Is there a downside to this, to the city, to the...
No, it, it, basically the only, there is no downside because again, it does not affect property values as much, change property classifications, assessed value or anything. What it does from an economic development standpoint is speed up the process because once you're, if there is consideration for an abatement because, you know, the new company or a new business or existing business that wants to expand, we basically can do that now in 30 days versus 60 days. So it helps meet the needs of businesses and again cuts the process by 30 days if we have a request for an abatement or those kind of things that's outside of the existing ERA. So once we declare the city as an ERA, then we've eliminated that, this process of going to have to go through.
Thank you.
Anything from the audience or any other council?
He explained it pretty good last time. You were talking about it to me.
Yeah, yeah, it has to remain open for 15 members.
There's a question out in the audience?
It was indicated in the previous meeting in answer to her question that the pricing on these properties is a real high sign for the income levels of this community.
Oh, do you?
That was my impression.
Well, this is on the, this is the public hearing about the economic revitalization area, not necessarily the housing development, but good, I go ahead and answer a question real quick. Is that I, I don't disagree with what you're saying, sir, but again, the intent here is not just to be able to accommodate current residents within the city or within the downtown. We're trying to bring, like other communities are doing with housing stock, we're trying to increase our population and bring more people into the community rather than just shuffling people around through the housing.
Thanks for bringing that, Jim, and in his defense, the agendas that were out there for the public to pick up, it's on their wrong too, so.
No, that's what, no, and we can, luckily as a, this is going to come back up again in the city council meeting with the ordinance, so I assume there'll be a time for possibly any questions that may come up again about the housing. So if there are other questions that come up, then give us your time.
Actually, five, yeah. To make it 15.
Jim, say it ain't so, you made a mistake.
But they were advertised.
New Year is here.
Jim, say it ain't so, you made a mistake.
But they were advertised.
New Year is here. Good start, I think, so far.
If everyone at Stanford pledged allegiance and remained standing for the invocation.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your goodness and your mercy towards us. We thank you for the great things that are happening in our community. We pray that you would bless this meeting tonight, that you would bless the mayor, his administration. We pray that you bless the city council, that you would fill all of their hearts with wisdom, help them to work together peacefully for the benefit of our city. We pray that you would bless all that are here, bless our healthcare workers, our emergency personnel, our school systems, and our economy, and we give you the thanks in Jesus' name. Amen.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Here.
Guston?
Here.
Clotho?
Here.
Ramsey?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
Saad Ashini?
Here.
All right, moving on, everyone who's received a copy of the minutes of last month's council meeting, are there any corrections that need to be made? Hearing none, I need a, need a motion that the journal be copied as written.
I second.
That needs to be motioned. I motion that we accept the journal as written minutes.
Pete, you second? Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Clotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Saad Ashini?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
All right, moving right along at this time, I'll open the floor for nominations for the president pro tempore.
I'd like to nominate Pete Saad Ashini as president pro tempore for 2022.
I'd like to nominate Pat. She's done more for this council than all of us put together.
Do I need a second for Pete first?
I'll second Pete.
A second for Pat?
I'll second for Pat.
Any other nominations for pro temp? Third and final call, nominations are closed.
Roll call vote taking. When I call your name, state who you're voting for, please. Anderson?
Pete.
Guston?
Pat.
Clotho?
Pete.
Ramsey?
Pat.
Russell?
Pat.
Saad Ashini?
Pat.
Whoa.
Pete.
Three for Pete. Four for Pat.
All right, moving on for the council liaison's report. Pat, we'll start with you and go on down the line.
The Peru utilities met on December 1st and December 15th at the Peru utilities office. The board green lighted the use of the Peru utility property for the extension of the nickel plate trail, and we'll be voting on a new board member tonight. The planning commission met on December 28th at city hall. We discussed putting together an application for planned unit development, PUDs, for the city by comparing other cities' applications. The aviation board canceled due to COVID concerns, and the civic center did not have a meeting in December. We did have a Christmas party. I believe it was a success. We enjoyed the food company and music. In February, I will be, I will start giving financial reports on the civic center. And that's what I've got.
Mark?
Very little this time. The county council and the parks board did not meet in the month of December. Alan Hunt is still the chairman of the county commissioners for two, for 2022, and animal control has four dogs looking for their owners at this time. That's all I got.
Kathleen?
Thank you, Mayor. I, we've been working, Pete, and I have been discussing the future growth of Peru committee for, how long have we been talking about it, Dustin, for a year at least?
First, I think the first year of your term sometime.
So, and we've been trying to figure out where, how it falls. And in the city ordinance, it's supposed to be, it says it's to be a standing committee. And that would put it in line with all other committees where we post and be formal. I've talked with Pete, and we've kind of decided that we would like to refer to the you, Dustin, and the ordinance review committee and amend that ordinance and make it, I think, as Pete reported, that as it was originally designed to be a think tank and a, not even an advisory committee, but something similar to that. I think that as an advocacy group, I think that would fit what our needs better. Is that what we're kind of...
Yeah, and trying to keep the numbers down, you know, for, for the committee, a couple representatives maybe from the council, maybe a couple people, you know, two or three people from the community.
Well, it, when we originally started, we had like a core group, and they were to, like, transportation, education, health, healthy community, diversity, art, and they were to create their own groups and go out in the community and then come back and report. Where do we go, I mean, we've been, what do we do with this?
So it's going to depend on what you want to do with it, honestly, if the board wants to disband it and just be, so, and backtrack real quick. We had looked for the ordinance establishing that standing committee, and I think there was a little confusion between you and myself on that. We have not been able to find that, and that's going back to when Tom had informed us that he believes that was established under Mayor Walker's administration. We looked in that timeframe, could not find an ordinance establishing that, which suggests that, okay, this was a committee created by the mayor and just incorporated by reference into our standing committees. Haven't found anything that confirms that either, so to be able to amend the ordinance, we have to know which ordinance it is to amend. Otherwise, we can just create, create a new ordinance, disbanding that standing committee and start fresh with mayor's committee.
2009, Mayor Jim Walker.
He happens to be here. Not to point him out, but. Mayor, could I...
He snuck in on us.
Mayor Walker, could I please ask if you would, could you provide any clarification for us with that?
On the future growth committee? It was a committee to get more people involved and what areas of the community we need to be focusing on, how we attract new industry, how, what kind of jobs are going to be beneficial to our community, and just to try to get an approach on how we can work with that information, then work with the economic development corporation to try to implement that information to them, hopefully creating some jobs.
Do you know, do you know if that was established by ordinance or how that was established?
It was just a working committee in the mayor's office.
So Pete and city council, I recommend that we follow that. I don't know what we need to do. Mayor, I really would love you to be involved and, you know, work with us on this, and can we figure out something between now and next city council meeting?
Should be able to.
I'd love that because there's been, I mean, Paige McClure's been involved in this committee, Pat Redmond, and there's just some really fascinating things, and art festivals come out of it, so we, I would love to keep it going and, and maybe I could, Pete, would you talk with Jim Walker, understand he's your friend and get some insight from him, please?
I see some good things coming out. I mean, I don't see why we might be able to keep it going if, if it's, you know, legitimate, official, professional.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Hewitt, Dustin, Pete, Mr. Walker. Yeah, this is, this is an exciting time for our community, so let's get this figured out. Thank you.
Betsy, do you have anything?
Um, yes, I have something to report from Border Works. At the December 21st meeting, Chad Merritt, who's a local contractor, came forward to bring to everyone's attention that there wasn't a contract being used between contractors and the city, and this was something that was used, there was always a contract used in the previous administration, so he brought that forward as a concern, and I just wanted to bring that forward to the council as well, so that you all know that no contract's been used within the last two years with this administration.
I think that's been resolved since the meeting.
Great.
It has been.
Good.
I have nothing to report.
I have nothing either, Mayor.
I have one thing. The solid waste district met and we have decided on the meeting dates for this year, and they're on the third Monday of the month, and the public is invited. We rarely get folks from the community come in and talk, and so if you'd like to join us at one of those meetings, it's great. It's at noon, the meeting is at noon on the third Monday of each month. That's all I have.
Okay. Moving right along, we're up for new liaison assignments. Patricia, if you want to do them now, you can. If you want to take them under advisement and see what everybody's been doing and see which way you want to go for about a week and then let everybody know.
It has, it has to be done during this meeting.
Yeah, for ordinance, it has to be done at the first meeting.
Does anyone want to switch?
I have a list of the liaison assignments. If you want, I can start and go right down the list.
All right.
I'll start with Steve Anderson. 911 dispatch, police department, ordinance review board, and utility service board.
And the utility service, I traded Kathleen for the police, or the fire.
Okay, right, right now, we're just...
Well, that's, that's what intended we'd like.
The utility service board taken off.
Yeah, and add fire.
Add fire and scratch utility service.
Is that okay, that what you want, add, add the fire then?
That's fine.
Okay.
Steve? So who's next?
You, huh?
That's fine.
I don't know that anybody else is changing.
Okay, well, let's go through them so that they're on record.
Okay.
Tom Guston, solid waste district, tax abatement review board, 911 central dispatch, city officials, and wage negotiations board.
That's incorrect. I was on city officials this year, not Tom.
I would like to do border works.
You would like to switch to border works? Okay.
All right, add border works. Are you taking away anything?
City officials.
You didn't have that. You weren't on city officials last year. I was.
He had city officials.
That's not right. Ask Jim Tid, I was on there.
Okay, that, do you have...
Why not on that then?
Right.
You are.
You didn't go for a whole year.
Do you have a corrected with you then because this is what I'm going by?
Well, you're not going by what's on the city website. It's corrected on the city website.
That was on 2021.
Let's go to the city website and check it out.
I got them all corrected on the city website about six months ago.
Okay. Betsy, I didn't know. Nobody would bother to tell me because I've been coming in and talking to them.
Right, the city officials is the meeting that we meet with Jim, you know, Jim Tid and the county people.
Oh, that's different. That's different.
I don't think so.
Yeah, that's not a part of the liaisons.
On, for city officials, I mean, on Tom Guston's, it's got 911 dispatch, economic development corporation, wage negotiation board, solid waste district, tax abatement review board, and ARP steering committee.
Does that have city officials on there, right?
No, it doesn't have city officials on there.
Let's get that fixed.
Okay.
So take city officials off of there?
So...
That's Betsy.
That's Betsy. So you want to take Betsy off of border works and add Tom to border works?
All right, moving on, Kathleen, tax abatement review board, take away the fire department?
Well, that's what intended we'd like.
The utility service board taken off.
Yeah, and add fire.
Add fire and scratch utility service.
Is that okay? Is that what you want to add to fire then?
Okay.
Yes. That's fine.
Okay.
Steve?
I don't...
So, who's next?
You...
That is fine.
I don't know that anybody else is changing.
Okay, well, let's go through them so that they're on record.
Okay.
Tom Guston, Solid Waste District, Tax Abatement Review Board, nine-one-one Central Dispatch, City Officials, and Wage Negotiations Board.
That's incorrect. I was on City Officials this year, not Tom.
I would like to do Board of Works.
You would like to switch to Board of Works? Okay.
All right. Add Board of Works, are you taking away anything?
City Officials.
You didn't have that. You weren't on City Officials last year, I was.
He had City Officials.
That's not right. Ask Jim Ted, I was on there.
Okay, that's...
Why not on that then?
Right.
You are.
You didn't go for a whole year.
Do you have a corrected with you then? Because this is what I'm going by.
Well, you're not going by what's on the city website. It's corrected on the city website.
That was on twenty twenty-one.
Let's go to the city website and check it out.
I got them all corrected on the city website about six months ago.
Okay.
Betsy, I didn't know. Nobody would bother to tell me. Because I've been coming in and talking to them.
Right, the City Officials is the meeting that we meet with Jim, you know, Jim Ted and the county people.
Oh, that's different. That's different.
I don't think so.
Yeah. That's not a part of the liaisons.
On, for City Officials, I mean, on Tom Guston's, it's got nine-one-one dispatch, Economic Development Corporation, Wage Negotiation Board, Solid Waste District, Tax Abatement Review Board, and ARP Steering Committee.
No, doesn't have City Officials on there, right?
No, it doesn't have City Officials on there.
Let's get that fixed.
Okay.
So, take City Officials off of there?
So...
That's Betsy.
That's Betsy. So, you want to take Betsy off of Board of Works and add Tom to Board of Works?
All right. Moving on, Kathleen, Tax Abatement Review Board. Take away the Fire Department?
All right.
Historic Preservation?
I have a question about that. Is there such a committee?
Is there...
Is there such a committee as Historic Preservation?
I think there is, but it's kind of non-functional right now, isn't it?
Yeah.
Here it is.
Tom.
I looked it up to be sure. Ordinance two, two thousand nine, and ordinance to establish a local historic preservation commission.
Right.
So, is there one in existence, Mayor?
Here it is.
But, I mean, is it being...
Is there any members to...
Is something that you can do?
I'm asking the mayor, please, for now, okay? Thank you. Excuse me.
Two thousand nine.
But is there an active committee? That's my question.
We'll have to check on it.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, in that ordinance, does it state...
I can't hear you.
In that ordinance, does it state how members are appointed to the committee? Are the members appointed?
Can you see that?
What is the ordinance number again?
Two thousand nine.
Establish the commission that will consist of five or more people that will meet and discuss preservation of local historical buildings.
Does it indicate who appoints those people?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Does it recommend who appoints these people?
This is the commission? Establish a commission that consists of five more people that will meet?
Fire.
So, I wouldn't mind being on that, you know, if it's...
I thought you were.
Yeah, I think you are.
I thought you and Kathleen were.
Yeah.
I think you are. So, like...
She's been kind of non-functional lately, though.
So, as Pat said, this is another thing that we can put together, Dustin, and work on.
I have the whole thing here, Kathleen, if you'd like to read it.
I'd love to.
It's in our book, it's in our...
Yeah, yes, it's just right here, so...
I read it.
I'm not going to take the city council time, but I would like to... I'll look it up. But yes, Pete, me, you, the mayor, and Dustin.
Also, you're under the Future Growth Board.
Yes, sir.
Makita.
Yes, sir.
And Ordinance Review Board.
Yes, and now the Peru Utility Board, Service Board Liaison.
Kathleen, when you're done, I'd like it back, please. Thank you.
Um, thank you. Okay, I've got this.
We'll check on Historic Preservation. That may go along with the Future Growth.
I don't know.
I'm not sure.
That seems like two completely different, different things. Thank you, Tom. I will look that up when I get home.
Okay, Mark Ramsey, Park Board, Animal Control, County Government, and Street Department. Any changes there?
Yep.
Does the, I don't know, Jim, do I need to have that listed as the County Commission, Economic Development Commission Board too, as well?
I believe that's an appointment. So, it's not a commission?
Yeah, well, that's an appointment by the city council. You're the city council representative to the County Economic Development Commission, like Tom is the appointment by the council to the City Economic Development Commission. Will those have to be listed on that or not?
They're not.
I'm not sure of that. I'll defer that to Dustin.
Thank you.
And that, what Betsy's talking about, that's a meeting of elected officials to talk about things in the city, and it goes with the president of the council.
All right. Going on, Pat Russell?
I'm going to stay the same.
You're pro-Tim now, so mark off vice chairman, Utility Board, Aviation Board, Historic Preservation. Are you off the Ordinance Review Board now?
I am not on the Ordinance Review Board.
And Planning and Commission?
I'm on the Aviation Board, Planning Commission, Utility Board, and Civic Center Committee. And that's it. And I'm a liaison for you guys.
Are you on Historic Preservation?
No.
No? Because I show that you are.
Yeah, your list is outdated.
And Planning Commission? Pete, Civic Center, Cable Commission, County Government, Future Growth Board, Historic Preservation?
Sounds okay.
Betsy? Board of Works, Tax Abatement Review Board, the Cable Commission, Ordinance Review Board, and City Officials? Anything else?
She's going to be removing the Board of Works.
Going to be what?
Removing Board of Works.
Okay.
So, it ends up... Steve is going to add Fire. Tom's going to add Board of Works. Pete's going to stay the same. Kathleen is going to remove Fire and add Utility Board. Mark is going to stay the same. And Betsy's going to remove Board of Works, and I'm going to stay the same. As far as liaison.
Okay.
Did we take a vote or anything, Dustin?
I don't think it...
Do we need to vote?
We did last year.
I don't think we need to vote.
You don't have to.
It was like, I believe it is a consensus among us. Is the consensus among us?
That's a vote?
Is the consensus among us?
I don't understand. Are you asking a question?
I'm saying, is the consensus among us? As whether we are...
The individual council member has accepted those assignments. There's no vote necessary to approve the assignments.
All right, moving right along.
Mayor, excuse me, I was going to ask for an amendment to the agenda. The Peru Fire Station update and financial report was unfinished business.
Okay, I've got you listed under Communications for all three of your requests.
Correct, and I'm going to take off the number three, where the city of Peru, talked about that, the Kris Kendal market. I'm just, I'm not going to make an issue of it because this is technicality and there's a lot of good things to do tonight. But PFT, those fire station was, should have been unfinished. It should have been an unfinished business, as I requested. But I think it's best we keep it where it is.
Once we get to the Communications, you'll be first on the list. And then, if there's anything you want to strike, we'll do it there.
Great.
Okay, anything else? Moving right along, unfinished business, seeing none. Move to new business. Reported the City Economic Development Commission concerning the proposed financing of economic development facilities for Wabash River Equities LLC.
Good evening. Earlier this evening, we held a public hearing on this issue. What they're asking for is a seventy percent tax abatement for twenty years, knowing exactly, on a two-hundred, or twenty million dollar project, which is through Wabash River Equities. Do you all have it in front of you or do you not?
Yes.
Is there any questions at this time? The Economic Development Board would appreciate that we include this in their asking for your proposal this time.
Okay, moving on to ordinance number one. Well, just...
Joe, the only thing they'll do is accept your report. Thanks.
An ordinance authorizing the entering into of a conditional project expenditure agreements of the city of Peru, Indiana, Wabash River Equities LLC, and the disposition of the proceeds thereof to Wabash River Equities LLC, and authorizing and appointing, approving other actions in respect thereto. Need a motion to consider ordinance number one.
Tell them...
Any discussion?
Second.
Mark, is that you second? Anderson?
Yes.
Guston? Floso?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Side Ashne?
Yes.
Yes.
Up for discussion.
Okay, a quick question here. When a city council member leaves the dais, should we not hold the meeting until he returns? This is a vote.
I will. I will take blame for that, I didn't see him leave.
No problem, I just noticed that, you know.
Right.
Joe, if a city council steps out during the vote, I note it. And as long as it's notated, they said in the notes that he has stepped out during the voting.
Yeah, but there's also information that keeps going on that he might be, and all that. I'm just, just a point of etiquette.
All right, any discussion under ordinance number one, twenty twenty-two?
Jim? Come up, please.
Good evening. I believe, hopefully, you have a copy of the packet that I dropped off before the meeting today. But basically, just again, reintroduce this project. And with me today is Burke Rishon with RE Consultants. Burke serves as the attorney for the developer in this particular case. What we are asking you to consider is approval of a pledge of reimbursement of TIF revenue that is generated by the Wabash River Equities Project on the former CSX property. I won't steal any of Burke's thunder, but he can go ahead and kind of update you real quick on what the project consists of. The estimated construction investment cost by Wabash River Equities is twenty million. There will be roughly a hundred and twenty-five temporary jobs associated with the project. But more importantly, it's going to provide needed housing within the city of Peru. And it's our goal, or our hope, that that's actually what this new product actually brings new people to Miami County and the city of Peru, so that we increase our overall population, not only in the city, but the county as well. This process is similar to what you have seen before. It started off with a pledge from my board of directors suggesting that we would pledge back seventy percent of the real property taxes generated by the project each year for a period of twenty years. And the way that operates is similar to what you've seen in the past. Wabash River Equities will pay their property taxes each year according to the schedule. And once those taxes are deposited in the allocation fund, the documents that are contained in this package require us, as the redevelopment commission for the city, as the economic development authority, to calculate seventy percent and reimburse Wabash River Equities for that. Thirty percent will remain in the TIF allocation fund to be used for other projects around the city to help benefit the city. So, in this document, in this series of documents, you first have our pledge resolution, just as a reminder about what transpired. Then you also have a copy of ordinance one, twenty twenty-two, which basically approves the pledge resolution. It also mentions a couple of other documents in this particular case, which is the financing agreement, which is no more than how this process will work. Just kind of in roughly thirteen pages explains exactly what I just told you in about twenty seconds, is they pay their property taxes, it goes into the allocation fund. Once it's in there, we reimburse them seventy percent, and we get to keep thirty percent. So, that's basically the financial agreement. And then the other document that's mentioned in the ordinance is the conditional project expenditure agreement, which kind of serves as the note that I would say. We went to a bank. Basically, it's the loan agreement, the note, whatever you want to call it. But actually, this document could be taken if Wabash River Equities wanted to, and use it as collateral for a loan, if they wanted to do such a thing. So, anyway, those are the basic documents that we have before you tonight. As Mr. Morlanax related, there was a meeting, a public hearing, of the Economic Development Commission that basically approved the resolution suggesting that you favorably consider the ordinance. And then, in that ordinance, is approval of all the other documents. So, what happens then is basically, once you approve it, if you should approve it, then it directs the mayor and the clerk treasurer to issue the financing agreement and conditional project expenditure agreement. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Burke to kind of talk a little bit about the project, what it entails and such. And I've got his approval to go ahead and share with you some copies of what the project looks like. And I do have some limited copies for the audience as well. Thank you, Jim. Members, I appreciate you being here this evening to hear and kind of consider this development. This is our first meeting of probably several that will be in and working together. Again, my name is Burke Richardson. I'm in-house counsel for Alan and Chris Collins, who are the real estate developers and managing members of Wabash River Equities LLC. A little brief background on who Wabash River Equities LLC, Alan and Chris Collins are. Alan and Chris Collins are real estate developers and...
Talk into the mic, please.
I'm sorry. Sure. I usually speak so loud that it covers anyway, so... They are real estate developers who've been in the Marshall County area and developing property for around fifty years now. And Alan and Chris have really focused the past thirty years or so on developing these styles of communities, wherein they go to rural Indiana and bring in four different types of housing, development styles, as four smaller properties, and bring them in as one major property in development to provide housing to four different segments of a community, which allows to spread out that service that we provide to the community. Each of the developments is owned individually and siloed, so there's no cross-collateralization amongst properties that you'll see with a lot of property developers. What they'll do is they'll develop one property and use that as collateral to develop another property, to develop another property. And then, if there's ever any financial distress, all the properties become subject to liquidation. That's not true here. Each individual entity... Each individual entity, Wabash River Equities, will own this development and this development only. There are a few that own a couple, but that's very, there's, I think, one or two that have more than one development. So what the, the plan would be is we come to Peru and develop this property and be here for the foreseeable future. Alan and Chris continue to own and manage each of their developments. It's not their desire to come in, build, and then lease up and sell and be gone. The benefit to the community for that is that they continue to own these properties, they want them to be of high quality and maintained well. Alan and Chris own their own property management company, which does all the leasing of the units and maintains all the units, does both the exteriors, the turnovers, meets with potential tenants, goes through all of the due diligence with them to make sure we have high-quality tenants and that the development stays very viable and well-maintained. Encourage any of you that would ever have an opportunity to go to Elwood, or Mr. Tid's been to several of our developments, Elwood, Warsaw, there's Tippi River Downs, Plymouth, we have Centennial Crossing. You'll see that all those developments are maintained by the property management company, and they do very well. Across, the total number of units Alan and Chris currently have in their companies is just over 2,000 units, and our current occupancy rate is anywhere between, and we do have a little bit of fluctuation here, but anywhere between 95 and 98%. So you have a turnover percentage that you'll never be 100% full, because there's always someone moving in or someone moving out, and with senior units, you're going to have ebbs and flows and, and those relationships. Sometimes we end up with turnover there because two seniors end up getting married and move out of two apartments into one, and so we have some, some of that turnover. But there was questions about pricing and those types of things, and we have such a diverse portfolio of different types of cities and areas and locations, economic development areas, all these different aspects to the how, to the portfolio that allows us to really determine what the proper rent is for any unit or any development, and the, the support for that argument is in that occupancy rate. If we were charging too much for locale, then that occupancy rate would be much lower. If we were not charging enough, then the business wouldn't be as viable. So we try to really find that sweet spot between what the community can afford and what's required by the development to make the entire project viable. So as, what's been passed out here is certainly our preliminary, but we are very nearly honed in on exactly what this development would look like on the old CSX property. I have it here larger, just for indication purposes, those big boxes on the site plan, those are just identifications of where the magnified sections on the further pages, those won't actually be on the ground or anything. Somebody, had someone ask me about that, what are these walls? Now, that's just identifying what's on the magnified pages later on. Here we have about 174 units. There are, we call the patio flats, so eight plexes, these are 12 plexes. There's four of those that have the one bedroom, or two bedroom, one bath, two bedroom, two bath, one car garage. There's four of those units, so that would be 48 patio apartments. There's 12-unit traditional apartment buildings and 18-unit traditional apartment buildings. Those are in the middle on the north side there with the little horseshoe. There's also a small clubhouse that would have a meeting area that's able for the tenants and residents to be able to come and use as maybe a place with a full kitchen to have a meeting or to have a dinner, Easter party, Christmas party for the family, whatever it might be. It'd be small, there won't be a pool or anything, but it's a nice little meeting area there. And with the YMCA, there's no need, a lot of these places will have little workout rooms and things, but with the YMCA, there's, we haven't really focused on pulling anything away from the YMCA from that standpoint. So this clubhouse will be a leasing area and little meeting area. Those apartment buildings are three stories tall, and so they meet any zoning requirements as far as height goes, but it really allows for those ground floor units to be accessible to anyone who has special needs, and this is good for both the senior community who would like to have an apartment, not necessarily in a senior-aged building, or anybody with any type of special need. So that's, we've worked hard on those apartment buildings. We have the senior building that'll have 34 units, that's going to have one bedroom, one bath units, and two bedroom, two bath units. Those bigger units have sliding glass doors for patios out onto the side, and those are really nice units for, for seniors. And again, in that senior building, it's going to have an independent set aside, meeting area with a fireplace, a full kitchen, a Four Seasons room, elevated gardens in the back with independent or shared, there's four different gardens per block, and it has its own irrigation, and we've seen some pretty impressive gardens at some of our locations, but just those little small areas the seniors are good at still having the green thump. Along the river and the walk, we have duplexes, and we decided to go with duplexes because we want to minimize the lost space between houses. So by putting 14 duplexes or 28 duplex units in there, you really maximize the usage of that coveted ground there along the river and along the walk, especially when there's a few little easement areas where we couldn't build within, but it was nice to put in walkways there. But by using the duplex model, we probably added another seven or eight units that is beneficial to the community because those are going to be your most highly valued units, and it benefits the development because they're the most highly valued units. So that allows us to, to maximize the, the use of that land without having all the 20 feet between each house. The senior units, it may be hard to tell, but the senior units backs out onto the river walk as well. To the east, there's a covered walkway. It's not a connected building, but it's a covered walkway that extends to indoor parking garage that will have, I think, 15 parking spaces, so seniors will be able to lease a parking space inside a garage, and then be able to walk from that garage covered into the building. For fire purposes, it's not, it's not all one building, it's a separate building, but it's all connected under, under roof and wall, so there won't be any weather inside those units. And there are several parking garages around that tenants like to lease because they can have an apartment, $75 a month, have a garage with a garage door opener, they can use that. About 20% use it for cars, 80% use it for storage for different, you know, overflow materials. So we would see this as one continuous build, there would not be phases. It would consist of, as you probably are aware, we already have equipment down on the property that's pulling up old concrete and disposing of that by.
Seriously?
Yeah, yeah, there's some of it. So the machinery is down there, and as a brief description, that really the way that this whole process works to build this type of development in rural Indiana, Alan and Chris put together a team and a vertical integrated structure that goes from moving dirt to putting on light switches and everything in between. They own a hardware company that sells, they can purchase all their carpet, water heaters, faucets, all that through as wholesale. They own the excavation company that moves the dirt, they own electrical heating, and electrical heating and air company that's not able to keep up with all the requirements, but have one that does that and helps to make sure that all that is structured and laid out correctly, and all the, all the trades in between, but we don't have necessarily all the work that you would need to be able to complete a project of this size, so that's where we have those subcontractors that come in and help facilitate a lot of that, either captive subs or local subs that we would have come in. So going from doing all of the development, we can take and not derive income necessarily from the excavation process, because Alan and Chris and the investors and the team isn't necessarily trying to earn money off of doing excavation. It's all a delayed process to the development, which is the business of leasing the units. So it allows us to really cut down on the cost of these developments, because if you have a third-party excavation company, they're not going to have units to lease at the end. They need to make their money doing the excavation. So that cost for the excavation is higher than what we would do it for, because we're deferring that income to a later date in time by leasing the units. So this number is drastically changing in the current market that we're in, but it's common for Alan and Chris to deliver projects like this in the range of, it sounds crazy, but with this vertically integrated system, between $68 and $72 a square foot of high-quality, affordable housing. Some people will look at it and say, well, that's not the style that I like, or I might not like that type of cabinet, and we can understand that, but across the portfolio doing these same things, you have an occupancy rate of 98%, the tenants like, and there's several reasons as to why that design is done. However, we've worked with the design committees and things here in Peru and looked to kind of adjust the way that design looks to maybe have a little bit newer age or a little bit more current styling inside, and we're certainly wanting to do that and work with Mr. Tid and the, and the community, yeah.
So at today's cost of supplies and whatnot, you're still looking at $68 to $72 a square foot?
At today's cost, from Centennial Crossing, which is our current development that we're completing and have been working in in about the past 18 months, from that development to today, we're seeing an increase in materials between 15 and 20%. So we're seeing an increased cost in those materials. So we don't, we won't reach that $68 a square foot in this project. We're hoping between 75 and 78, below $80 a square foot is our hope. And there's a lot of things that come into play in being able to develop that property. So you're looking at buying, mowing faucets, mowing calls and says, hey, we've got 2,000 faucets for sale, they, they're retail 80 bucks, we'll sell them to you for $15 apiece. Well, that's how you achieve that, and you have to have the ability to pay for it quickly and store it, and that's where it's 50 years' worth of real estate development that they've put in place to have this package put together and be able to deliver products on that scale. And the, the key behind all of that is that it allows for you to lease a high-quality, a, maybe not the most up, up-to-date or stylish development, but one that's very nice and that people, again, 98%, 95 to 98% occupants, people love, and provide that at a lease amount that fits the business model that makes it all possible.
What, what are your expected leases term-wise, length-wise?
So.
Year to year, by?
For a tenant?
Yes, excuse me.
We have year-long leases, and we have a renewal period every year. We have some tenants that are, you know, year-over-year, and then we have some that are in units for eight, 10 years, you know, that have been, we have to change the carpet while they still live there, kind of thing. So we've had long-term tenants, but it's always a year-over-year yearly renewal, just because people's lives change so much over a period of time. We've never done a family or a residential lease over a year. But again, we kind of talked earlier about those lease amounts, and our, our hope is to maintain those levels of senior units between 699 and 800, depending upon how many bedrooms, and all the way up to the duplex units could be 1,200 to $1,500 a month, depending upon bedrooms and those types of things. In the design you've seen, or in the handouts, there's elevations that show representations of the apartment buildings that we currently build, the senior building that we've designed for this development. There's also on the duplexes, there's duplexes that we've done before, but are just representations, not necessarily final designs at all, of what the duplexes would be down along the river. You could end up with some two stories, one and a half stories, that could provide like a three-bedroom, two-bath, two-bedroom, two-bath, different design styles that would fit down along that, the river.
Is the apartment building, does it have an elevator, or is it all stairs?
All stairs, no elevators on the inside.
Even for the assisted-living building?
The senior building is all one floor.
Oh, it is all one floor?
Yeah. And it's a big building. It's roughly 50,000 square feet, I think, so it's a big building.
That's the long one.
Yeah, absolutely, and again, these, the three-story apartment buildings, those are buildings that we, we're building now, much of the same. The patio flat apartments are, we've built a lot of different ones, that's a representation of what we've built. I just don't want the committee to think that this is exactly the building that's going to be built in any one location, it's a representation.
Where are the apartments that you have built that possibly we could go and maybe drive by and look at?
Sure, yeah. Elwood, Indiana has Bison Ridge.
Elwood, Bison Ridge?
Uh huh. And Bison Ridge was a development that was started and it kind of stalled out, and the city and the landowners came to Alan and Chris, they'd seen what they had done at Tippi River Downs in Warsaw, was another one, Tippi River Downs.
Warsaw?
In Warsaw.
Tippi River.
They came and saw that, and they said, we want that here. And so that was one that the roads and infrastructure and stuff had already been put in, may not have been the design that Alan would have picked himself, but was able to transition it into this four different types of housing that make the whole project work. Bison Ridge is a little bit different. Tippi River Downs in Warsaw, Centennial Crossing in Plymouth. Is our most recent, and so that one's still under construction and is, might be nice for the community or members of the board to go see and see what a job site looks like, because that's what you could expect to have here. We have teams on, on the ground all the time, always making sure to keep things clean, doing our best to be good neighbors, to keep up all the requirements as far as soap fences and things that are here with the CSX site, are all the more focused on making sure that we maintain all the requirements as far as soil management plans and different things. We've gone through different meetings to make sure that everybody understands what's required of those, have engineers, everybody overseeing and advising on how to make sure that that site stays as clean as possible.
If this is adopted tonight and passed, whatnot, when do you anticipate really getting going?
Sure. As it stands now, we have some soil remediation processes that we have to go through. As Mr. Tid said, he took, what took him 20, 20 seconds to explain, he gave it to attorneys, and it takes us 13 pages, but we have some of that to try and put it into layman's terms to firm up the soil. Right there along the Wabash, it's a little soft, so we've got some different things we have to do there. But we're already removing the concrete, getting that, all that stuff taken care of. We're going to use that concrete on-site for the base, for the roads and things and subsurface for building to solidify everything up and not remove that off the property, so that will all stay there. And we should have, be before, we will be the planning commission here, hopefully by February with our P and B petition to be approved, so that we can get started on the property here in the spring. We're already in the process of applying for building permit for this senior building, which is right there behind the end center. So the reason we like that senior building is such a big building and requires so many services to be here, you can get that foundation in, and then that's a lot of work for two months to keep everybody busy. And so while we're doing that, we finish the rest of the, the infrastructure, developments, site development on the ground, and then that way we can come right in with cement pour foundation to start building apartment buildings and keep moving quickly along.
Plus, we still have to execute the, we've done legal description, you know.
Just my things like that.
Survey and everything's all done, so, you know, we still have some steps yet to go. But again, if you approve, or should you approve tonight, the reimbursement, that's just basically one step. It's not, in other words, if for some reason, God forbid, and I won't lose a year's worth of work that we've put into this project, and I don't see that happening, but if for some reason that the project didn't go, there's no mark, no file, if you approve the TIF because unless it's a project that generates, they generate taxes, it doesn't make any difference what's approved, it's.
And the agreement, the agreement itself states that if there's no development within a certain period of time, the land would revert back to the city anyway.
Yeah. Just a couple of real quick things, and like I said, we've been working on this project for about a year, pretty close to that. Started off with an RFQ process, there was a committee that reviewed all the proposals, did interviews, selected RE Consultants. And first of all, I want to apologize for the audience that was here earlier, because I kind of led you to believe that I knew Phil Collins. Because I, I had Phil Collins in my mind, it's actually Chris Collins, not Phil, so I don't have a connection there. But the other due diligence that we have done in back checking and backgrounds showed that this is a top-notch company. I've talked with mayors directly. I've talked with Mayor directly, he said they'd love to have another development in their community with these guys at the helm. So all of their background check and everything has come back very, very positively. So with that, Pat, can you answer any other questions you may have?
Jim, yeah, I'd like, I see two different estimates you threw out. You know, you're talking about senior, senior housing. So what's affordable to a senior? You mentioned here 1,200 to 1,500 a month?
The senior unit, the senior building where we have specifically designed senior units that have, that are kind of catered to that senior, special types of showers, special types of kitchens, special types of washers and dryers, that's where you're focused on, that 650, 699 to 800 range, and that depends upon how many bedrooms and baths you have. So if it's a two-bedroom, two-bath, that's going to be the higher range. And that, the reason for the range is depending upon the community. Two-bedroom, two-bath senior unit in Warsaw leases for more than a two-bedroom, two-bath unit in Elwood. So that, that's where that range just comes into play, for just those senior units.
Okay. Thank you.
Unless there's something from the audience?
Hey Jim, once the pavement works done and they actually can start officially, what's the, what's the timeline from start to finish? 18 months, two years?
Yeah, we would, I always under-promise and over-deliver is kind of the motto, but we're looking anywhere between 18 months to 24 months. And really, right now, our concern is the soil remediation process of getting it firmed up. You have very few companies that do that type of work, and they're busy. And so we're going to go through our process of making sure that we build, or we can build without maybe that remediation process, or we're going through the process of becoming certified to do different types of peers and things to serve, to solidify the land, and we'll work on those until that company can come in with the soil remediation. But if they're 12 months out, and we have to have that done to build apartment buildings in certain spaces, the senior building's so big and wide that it's, it almost floats, kind of thing. So that was one that we could be a little bit more secure on, that's why we're starting with it, another reason to start with it first. But our hope is, again, continuous build, no phases, or build and wait, build and wait, we'll build. And we, you know, in Centennial, we're leasing apartments, or we're still running around doing, once we get the infrastructure in and the buildings get a certificate of occupancy, we start leasing. So, because that's, we have our business models and our investors and people that want to see that cash start to flow in as opposed to just flow out. And so we're familiar with that process, and we're cognizant of the tenants' needs and our requirements as far as building goes, but yeah, we'll hopefully be anywhere between 18 to 24. But as far as from now to start leasing apartments, it could be nine months.
Correct. One, one of the things that we face in this community, in, within the city, is in some cases, God didn't leave us with great soil. You know, when you look at, you know, the property loan, US 24, you know, what happened out there and kind of the consistency of some of that, the development asked, work with, and the same way with the CSX site, is that it's not necessarily, it's not contamination, we've got the approvals for residential development through I.D.M. and those kind of things. It's the consistency of the soil where it's not amenable to action, to be able to do kind of a standard foundation that you normally find in other communities. So we have to be able to work out an arrangement where we can help offset some of those costs with some type of special foundation system. Otherwise, the property's just going to sit there. Anybody who helps on that site is going to run into the same situation.
And also, I was just saying, to help facilitate moving forward faster, that's where we're going to get certifications and types of foundations that will be amenable to the site, as well as waiting for these other types of contractors to come in to do the soil remediation process.
And one person kind of started this process of acquiring that CSX property.
Yep.
And it's, that he started the negotiations, that's one of the factors. So I tell you, this is starting to, to come, come together, so...
Jim, you just made an excellent point, that many of these projects, almost all of them were started 10 years ago, or, or five to 10 years ago. And it's taken so long, and it's just, those who have come before us...
One of the biggest things was negotiating with CSX to be able to purchase the property, that was one of the biggest things. But no, each administration has carried it on, and so we're at the point now where hopefully, if you're approval and such, we're going to see bricks and mortar start developing. So with that, I want to shut up, because we've got, we've got a rest of the evening to go.
Is there as much of an issue with the contaminated soil in that area as there was with the Y? I know there was certain areas that was worse.
It's not the contamination.
Just the, the stable as well.
It's basically the soil. So it's, we were hoping that the soil consistency would be better as we moved to the east, because up where the Y was, was where the roundhouse was. And so, but unfortunately, it didn't stack up to be that, so we wound up with the same type of consistency as what the Y UCA experienced. And they're the ones that had to put the geo-piers and pillars and those kind of things to be able to support the type of weight that they're looking at.
Our engineers have spent about 2% of the time worried about contamination area and 98% of the time worried about soil. Yeah, so the contamina, any quote-unquote contamination is not at all a concern, and it's built around, like...
I actually know, that's just always been a question about the contaminated soil, and I know that it's not been as big of an issue as what a lot of people want to make it up to be.
It's not. Otherwise, I.D.M. wouldn't have gave us the okay to go ahead and put residential and commercial development, they have stuck with industrial development on the side.
And I think, I don't know how long it's been since Backhoe's been in there, but we've been digging up concrete and having run into it. With any piece of ground, you don't ever know until you start digging it up. And they've been digging up concrete and, you know, issues have come up. So, you know, have it hit an oil tank or something under the ground that you just can't, no, boorings have said that there's anything like that, and there's been nothing that we've come into so far. If there had been, I would not, not been so far.
Thank you.
Any favorable consideration of the ordinance? Thank you very much.
Any other questions from the audience?
Make a motion to adopt?
Entertain a motion that we accept?
I motion, we adopt ordinance one, 2022, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Floto?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Fahad Ashini?
Yes.
And Wolf?
Yes.
All right, moving right along. Next order of business, resolution number two, 2022, Common Council, City of Peru, Indiana, confirmation resolution of the designation of economic revitalization area. Need a motion to entertain the resolution to consider?
Tell me.
Roll call, bud?
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Floto?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Fahad Ashini?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Yes.
Any discussion?
I believe this won't take long. I'll be very brief. At your last council meeting, you approved a conformatory, or excuse me, a declaratory resolution whereby you declared your intent to consider an economic revitalization area within the corporate boundaries of the city of Peru. And again, as we stated before, establishing this ERA is basically, kind of eliminates a step necessary for you to consider abatements in the future. In other words, by setting up this ERA, it does not affect property classifications, assessed value, anything like that. It doesn't automatically approve abatements. That still has to come to you individually. All it does is pre-identify the city as an area that you want to encourage development and investment. And again, it's basically takes what would normally be a 60-day process, and there's it down to 30 days or less. So with that, conformatory, after you, or, excuse me, after the declaratory resolution today, of course, at, it was a little bit past 5:45, you held a public hearing regarding establishing the ERA and answered any questions from the public. Now comes the time, based on what you heard from the public, for the council to consider the conformatory resolution, which basically now just confirms what you declared last month and establishes the ERA. So I'd ask you to give favorable consideration to this resolution confirming the economic development revitalization area.
I would like to make a motion to adopt resolution number one, 2022, Common Council, City of Peru, Indiana, conformatory resolution of the designation of an economic revitalization area.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Floto?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Fahad Ashini?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Okay, moving right along. Next is resolution number two, 2022, resolution of the Common Council, City of Peru, approving the request of Homestead Barnes and for tax abatement. Need a motion to entertain this resolution?
I'll make a motion to consider resolution number two, 2022, a resolution of the Common Council, City of Peru, approving the request of Homestead Barnes and for, and for a tax abatement.
Second. Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Floto?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Fahad Ashini?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Yes.
Discussion?
Yes, real quick, again, this, and first of all, I'd like to thank Homestead Barnes for your patience and understanding, but this is an example of what we talked about where we were proceeding with the tax abatement request, and then come to find out that their location wasn't in an ERA. So you just took care of that process from happening, or that potential problem from happening in the future. So at this time, presenting resolution number two, which recognizes 180,000 in real property improvements that are being made by Homestead Barnes. The Homestead Barnes completed a statement of benefit to one. Our board of the Economic Development Authority is suggesting a tax abatement equal to 50% of the new taxes associated with the investments. Again, what happens, or what the tax, what the assessed value was on that property before the abatement continues to come to the city at 100%. This only takes the increment based on Homestead Barnes' new investment, and where 50% of that would be reduced each year for a period of seven years. So again, this is the way to recognize investment being made in our community, and I would ask you give your favorable consideration of resolution two, as described. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number two, 2022, resolution approving the request of Homestead Barnes for tax abatement.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Floto?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Fahad Ashini?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Yes.
Any discussion?
I just have a question for Dustin. I've been looking for the original ordinance that set this, this up with the utility board, the ordinance 67, 1982, and haven't been able to find it.
He stepped out.
Yeah. Let's wait a moment, please, mayor, or other discussion. I had a, a Bruce citizen ask me why and how come, and so I was looking at the ordinance to provide a better explanation, and I've had a hard time finding it, so. Not a hard time, I haven't been able to find it.
And just so the public knows, it's on here that the mayor will receive 28,281.47 from the Peru utilities in addition to his salary from the city. The clerk treasurer will also receive 18,710.89 from the utilities and the utility service board members. They make 6,108.19.
Dustin Kathleen has a question for you.
Certainly.
I haven't been able to find the ordinance that established this, the ordinance 67, 1982. I had a, an individual ask me today why, what, and how, the reasoning behind this, and I haven't been able to find it. Could you direct me to that, or?
The ordinance is on file up in the clerk's office. I may have a digital copy on my files. The payment for the mayor, the clerk, council, or not the council, but the payment for the mayor and the clerk, it's a payment in lieu of taxes. And I hate to pass the buck, but I think Josh, he's been around a lot longer, can explain that a little better than me, maybe.
What I know is that it's always been done, and that, that, you know, I can't say why it was originally made that way.
Mr. Walker may know.
Yeah, he may have that reason at the meeting.
He's never going to show up to another meeting.
It's been established for as long as I've been on, I was on the council, prior to going into the mayor's office. And the reason they did that was to, you know, reduce the cost to the city on those wages that the city owns Peru utilities.
Right.
So they use some of that money to offset using tax dollars to make those salaries what they were.
And it's common practice in municipalities, it's not just Peru utilities and the city up here that do that. It's very common.
When I told this individual that, yes, it's the way it's always been done, it didn't overwhelm.
That's not a great answer at all, right?
No, the reason is that it's like saving tax dollars, I mean, they're, you know, that they, we own the utilities and...
I had an individual ask me today why, what, and how, the reasoning behind this, and I haven't been able to find it. Can you direct me to that, or?
The ordinance is on file up in the clerk's office. I may have a digital copy on my files. The payment for the mayor, the clerk, councilor, not the council, but the payment for the mayor and the clerk, it's a payment in lieu of taxes. And hate to pass the buck, but I think Josh, he's been around a lot longer, can explain that a little better than me, maybe.
What I know is that it's always been done, and that, you know, I can't say why it was originally made that way.
Mr. Walker may know.
Yeah, he may have that reason at the meeting.
He's never going to show up to another meeting.
It's been established for as long as I've been on, I was on the council prior to going into the mayor's office. And the reason they did that was to, you know, reduce the cost to the city on those wages. The city owns Peru Utilities.
Right.
So they use some of that money to offset using tax dollars to make those salaries what they were.
And it's common practice in municipalities. It's not just Peru Utilities and the city of Peru that do that. It's very common.
When I told this individual that, yes, it's the way it's always been done, it didn't go over well.
That's not a great answer at all, right?
No, the reason is that it's like saving tax dollars. I mean, they, we own the utilities and you have input on what they do down there, but if you go to the service board, it's all been passed through there, through the city council. It has been done for years and years. I don't know when it actually established, but I know that was the logic behind it.
So it has to come back to the city, but it doesn't necessarily have to come back to the mayor and the clerk, right? It could be used for like public safety, like for police or fire?
No, it's used for their salaries.
That's the way it's established now.
Okay.
I just, Dustin, could you get, do you mind providing a digital copy for me sometime this week? Would that be?
Copy that original ordinance?
Yes.
I'll see if they have it.
Lightronic sometime? I just.
I think the other thing is, in the term that was brought out, I think by Dustin, is payment in lieu of taxes. So it's a common practice in a lot of municipalities where there are no property taxes that are paid because, again, this is a city owned utility, correct?
Correct.
So instead of paying taxes on the property that their equipment or their real estate takes up, then they make a payment to help just what the mayor said, offset.
Okay.
Some of the wages and expenses of the city because they're not generating, the city's not generating tax revenue on their equipment or their real estate like they would if it was a private, for-profit utility company like American Water or those kind of things. I'm sorry. I was only using this as an example, okay? But a private company that would be subject to paying taxes.
And we also do pay a payment in lieu of taxes on our property, what would be the taxes for a private company back to the city. And I believe that's somewhere in a $700,000 range.
Okay. That helps me understand. In lieu of taxes. Could that, could, beg your pardon?
Pilts.
Pilts.
Pilot or pilts is how, depends on what.
What's the?
Pilot or pilts is, depends on what, who you're talking to.
This person is just a constitutionalist and likes the, likes to read the ordinance and whatnot, so. And it's not me, although I'm a nerd like that, but, so thank you very much. Could this, another question, this is my question. Could this ordinance be amended to bring it back directly to the city instead of?
To bring what directly back to the city?
Never mind. I retract that question. Thank you. Does anybody in the audience have questions?
Are there any other questions?
There is, there was no increase from 2019, 2020, '21, or '22 this following year in the mayor, the clerk treasurer, and the utility service board's salary. It's the same one.
You know, I went back quite a few years, and it's not that much higher than quite a few years ago. So, anyway.
Make a motion, we adopt Resolution Three, 2022.
Second.
Real call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
My voice changed.
Russell?
Yes.
Faiad O'Ginney?
Yes.
Well.
No.
Just commentary for me. I was going to vote no because I didn't understand, but thank you for explaining, taking the time.
All right. Moving right along. Next order of business, Peru City Council vote to reaffirm Dave Van Bellen to the Peru Utility Service Board.
And I would make note that, as it's worded on the agenda and as it was presented, kind of indicates that the decision was already made prior to the meeting. I think it needs to be clear that the board does not have to reappoint Dave. It should be a motion to reconsider the appointment of Mr. Van Bellen. I mean, the board most certainly can. The board is not obligated to do so.
I make a motion to reconsider to appoint Dave Van Bellen to the Peru Utility Service Board.
A second.
Real call.
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Faiad O'Ginney?
Yes.
Well. Yes.
Okay. Communications. I'll start out with Kathleen. She is forwarded three. The first one, the Peru Fire Department Station Two, update and detailed financial report.
Actually, that's, I'm just going to have that be the other two I'm not worrying about for right now, okay? For communications, I would just like to, I'm excited to hear about the second, number two fire station, so. By the way, Chief Hawk, it's beautiful.
Good evening. First of all, I apologize. We had a slideshow set up for the projector, but unfortunately, things didn't work out for us this evening, so am I correct? But I do have it on the computer here if anybody would like to come and look at it afterwards. I do have the plans here also. I'd love to go with you in regards to that. Right now, as you see, we did break ground. I don't know if anybody's taken notice, but it's coming along very nicely. We've had no problems other than a little bit with the weather, but we expected that going this late in the year. We've had, we're probably about 50% completion. Exterior is probably, I'd say, close to 80% exterior. We're still waiting on, unfortunately, this lack of supplies, you might say, doors, windows. So we're still waiting on those, and we're hoping the doors will be in this week. The windows, we did do a little change order on those and got those in, so that was completed. Concrete's at 50% right now. Again, we're waiting on the weather, probably looking at Wednesday or Thursday to do the other section of the interior concrete only. So hopefully we'll get that done. Framing should start next week on the interior framing on it. Again, depends on the contractor and everything. Completion date, probably, we're looking at May, hopefully, if we can get all the stuff in, supplies. Again, that's been a battle right now getting supplies in, and unfortunately, then the cost of supplies have went up, and we're just trying to work through that right now. So, you know, the gentleman before me spoke about 15 to 20%. That's so true, you know, and supplies going up. We originally was going wood studs, then we went back to steel because steel is actually cheaper than wood. And now we're back to steel because steel has gone up and wood has came down. So we're just juggling back and forth. As far as the financial side of it, today's date, we're total 338, 595, 81. That's the building, the abstract, that's the amount that's issued right now in checks. So I believe we're pretty close on track as far as the financial status on it. There has been some things that went up, and we have no, unfortunately, which we did, but I don't know the exact amount. That's not bad to it, but that's why we went back in on our budget and added $5,000 to fire to do a cream of fun and 10, 15%, over, that probably were. So we probably utilized that. We still have flooring that needs to be purchased, and we're not sure where we're going with that yet because we looked at flooring and we looked at that concrete, all that, it's coated, like a, or a epoxy coating that they put on the floor, it's supposed to last, but unfortunately, that's went up too. So now we're back to looking at carpet squares and vinyl. So it's just a flip-flop back and forth. So it's a little bit of a battle, but nothing can't work through. We still have lights that need to be purchased. We're not trying to do lights while lights are in, just a few of them, most of them will have to be changed down. Paint and appliances, which I got appliances, we're looking at, but I'm sort of dragging my feet on those, both the prices will go down because they were hard to get, pricing on red, now prices dropping. For example, is the stove itself, I had price probably in the first year in that area. And on the stove itself, it was running about $2,800, and now it's down to roughly about $22, with the exact same thing, so prices are dropping. So that's something we don't need to purchase right away until it lasts. Hopefully, though, it doesn't change things, it'll go bad again where we can't get a product, but right now, everything is available that we're looking at. Interior-wise, framing, like I said, hopefully start next week, depending who's with the contractor that we can get in there. We have utilized, most people in my account, as far as everything, and it's been great work with them. They've all actually challenged backwards with us to make it happen, and very fast competitive, which I really appreciate that, what they've done with all the contractors. Great work with them. That's pretty much all I have as far as the building wise.
I have one question still for you and Susan. Where, from what account did the purchase of the building come? At one point, we had heard CARES Act, and last month, you said SEEDIT.
How did it get out of SEEDIT?
I beg your pardon?
It was taken out of SEEDIT originally, with the promise of reimbursement, remember? What reimbursement is? You pay it, and then they reimburse it.
Yes.
So we had to pay it, so we paid it out of SEEDIT.
I, so, did, were we supposed to approve that SEEDIT purchase?
It was already appropriated the money.
Okay. Is that, is my understanding that CARES Act money was going to be used because?
We didn't use the CARES Act money, though. We just used it at the end of the year to purchase the building and set it SEEDIT.
Okay.
We didn't have CARES Act reimbursement back yet.
Okay.
Do they have any other questions? We love everything that come out. They're working quite often. We've had a conference this week because we're in between construction on right now, between interior, exterior. So we have plans, again, I have the pictures of the interior building here, it's a walkthrough, it's a local tour of the building, so we'd love to take a look at after a couple of minutes, I'd like to show that to you.
Chief Hawk, I'd like to applaud you and Assistant Chief Dane, because I went back over the numbers, and what you just gave us, you're right on target. So thank you. That's just what I wanted to know.
You know, again, with money purchased, with purchasing and everything, it workflows. Again, I'm proceeding this whole number and everything going up just without more control.
Right.
But I did drag my feet just a little bit, not as much on buying the stuff, but time is lost, but the better value of the building as far as product, because we would buy it right then, which it worked out for us great as far as the contractors, not that I'll get in, so, and now prices are starting to go down, so.
Such a beautiful building. I don't remember who I was talking to. I don't know if it was you, Paige, but somebody said, "We need to get some of those rocking chairs on the front porch when you guys are done," because it's just a beautiful building.
It's going to be a very cozy building, too, for the guys, you know. It's been well needed. We live in our Station Two now, which is a temporary building.
Yeah.
It has no curtail to the public, has no curtail to new businesses coming in, you know, they look at that, and oh my gosh, that proves best right there, you know, a whole barn after the temporary building. So this is something that's really easy done, so glad it's coming together.
Well, congratulations, Assistant Chief Dane, congratulations.
Plans are to sell, sorry, plans are to sell the old one on Washington when that was done, or are you guys going to utilize it for storage?
No, we're not going to utilize the storage. I think the city, I'm not sure, Aaron Miles here, if you have, I'm not sure where he's at, everyone sell it or lease it or rent it. I know they've had a couple people inquire about that, but I think that'll be between the city and the, once we.
I just wasn't sure if that money would go back to your department for offset some of your costs that you've already spent, or if that was just going to go directly back to the city?
No, we just haven't by that far yet. That's something we have to look at later, which would be nice. Yeah, I think we're pretty much on track. We're trying to utilize a lot of stuff from the other Station Two, just little things like the sign out front we looked at, which is going to change. It's hopefully not the perfect size of it. If I fall, we'll remove it and take it there to save a couple thousand dollars there. So little things, furniture wise, we're pretty good on furniture, might provide a few things. It's not a lot.
Is the cost of that?
Not only that, saved a lot of money on purchasing the fast and all building over doing everything from scratch.
Oh yeah, that was a really good price on that building, for the quality of the building.
It was, six-inch walls, six-inch slabs.
That's a nice, well-constructed building.
That was noted also from the engineer, it's been out, the architect, and also the builder, they really, just really praised the quality of the building that we purchased, so. And that being said, that's why we didn't build eight addresses on that west side of Bay because the building would afford that, eight addresses that they attached to.
Oh, is that $21,000 that you guys paid for that .04 acres? So you have more room to turn around? Is that included in the $338,000?
That's correct.
Is included in there?
Yes, I will, I'll give you a rundown, but it's included, all its value abstract, building purchase, adjacent land, appraisable blueprints, building materials, deposits on building, plan and sign, and these gravel stones, windows, interior, some gear racks, cabinets, and tools, so that, that doesn't include that. That, you know, that was, that's where we're at now, there will be.
It does or doesn't? It does include that?
And there will be additional, of course, as we move on, but that can begin out in September, that will be projected, so, terrified of chair four.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Number two.
That's all I'm gonna.
I'll go ahead and read it, and then if you want to say no, that's fine, because it was on the agenda.
Okay.
Proper Method and Procedure for Financial Appropriation, Dustin Kearns. Her third question was, City of Peru was cosponsor for 2021, Chris Kingelmark, discuss financial contributions to Miami County Economic Development Authority.
I'm going to withdraw those unless somebody wants to discuss that.
Do you want to have any objections to them being withdrawn?
Do we need to amend, do we need to amend that? Because it's just in communications.
It's just, right, it's communication, it's not an agenda topic, really.
I beg your pardon?
It's not new business or anything, so, nothing to do.
Okay, anything else under communication? Anybody in the council have anything? I see somebody moving forward to take the mic.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sorry, I know it's been a long night, I'll make it quick. I'm here this evening to discuss my actions and walk with the people of Peru. Although I do not hold a political position, I do work for the citizens of Peru, and I do not take that for granted. At the December City Council meeting, I was called home to address the council. Please know the words that I spoke in that meeting came from an emotional place that were spoken without in-depth thought prior to speaking. I know words matter, and the way we speak ones matter. Since being employed by the city, I have taken on many roles. Most recently, the biggest role that I have taken on has been the civics center director. The job has had both technical and demanding moments. As a resident, I have at times placed priority on work over time with my family, and I determined on the night of the last council meeting that I would focus on my family for one evening. An issue that was called into question at the last meeting required me to come in unexpectedly. In answering questions to council members at the previous meeting, I responded honestly, but admittedly with frustration and emotion. I should have better controlled my emotions in my responses. Tonight, I ask that the council and the public understand what circumstances contributed to my responses, but I do not make any excuse for my emotional tone. As I move forward, I will continue to learn to balance my work life and my family life. I will do the best job that I am capable of doing, and I hope that the council and the citizens that we serve will view me as an asset to our community. I will continue to work hard for our community because I believe in our city and I want to be a part of helping our city reach its full potential.
Rebecca, this was not, not easy for you.
It's been a learning curve, that's for sure.
Has, has been with all of us.
Yes.
Thank you.
I appreciate you guys letting me speak.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you, Rebecca, and all you do.
Thank you.
You do a lot. You do a lot.
No, it is a lot to me, thank you.
You're, you've not gotten a notice, Rebecca. Thank you.
Anything else under communication? Anything else under communications from the audience?
Yes, sir.
I have a question, Kirk, Kirk, I'll stop. Kathleen?
Yes.
Will you come up? I'll come in. Point of clarification. Was it your intention to reappoint Dave Van Bellen to the, to the, to utility service board?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you did tonight?
Yes, sir.
No, you just considered it, you did not adopt it.
You're correct. You're correct. Thank you, Kirk. Dustin?
We did not adjourn, so we need to do that.
You can't do that since yes, you haven't adjourned.
Thank you, Kirk.
Go ahead.
Someone want to make a motion?
Somebody wants to make a motion?
I'd make a motion that we adopt, that we, Dustin, what do we?
Motion to.
Not for resolution, whatever it was.
Adopt, adopt Dave Van Bellen to.
Yeah.
I don't know the word.
It wasn't a resolution.
It wasn't, it was just a communication.
No, it was still under new business. It was just, someone make a motion to reaffirm the appointment of Dave Van Bellen to the Peru Utility Service Board?
I make a motion to reaffirm Dave Van Bellen to Peru's Utility Service Board.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Cloco?
Yes.
Ramsey?
No.
Russell?
Yes.
Faidagony?
Yes.
And Wolf?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Crosscut. Anything else? If not, we're up for adjournment. Move with you.
Great meeting, lots of good things coming on.
Second.
Perfect.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.